Followed by Doña Asuncion Hizon Elementary School.
Jay Cruz Senior Elementary School.
Followed by... Vicente Hizon Elementary School. Vicente Hizon Senior Elementary School.
Followed by Sasa Elementary School.
And followed by Cornelio Sireta Senior Elementary School. Coming from Bango District.
Followed by the Bunawan District. Headed by the District Commissioner, Mrs. Risa Joy A. Sarile.
Palapakan na to ang Bunawan District. Here we are, these scout leaders, our unit leaders, district coordinators, coming from... Bunawan District. Now approaching the stage. Coming from Davao Central District. Davao Central District is headed by the District Commissioner, Noa Wuland, Mrs. May Bolan. And following Davao Central District is Santa Ana District.
Santa Ana District headed by the District Commissioner, Scout Leader or Scouter, Alejandro J. Ryan.
Hip hip! Hip hip!
Ladies and gentlemen, the good pitchet coming from Santa Ana District.
Hip hip! Hip hip! And thank you very much, Santa Ana District.
Ladies and gentlemen, with the same the... The group of Santa Ana District's scouts and scout leaders.
And following Santa Ana District, it's all now from San Roque District.
San Roque District headed by the District Commissioner, Scouter Lita A. Libre. San Roque District headed by the...
Starting with Jose F. Porras Elementary School.
And adult scout leaders.
Yeah. San Roque District. Hip hip! Hip hip! Thank you very much, San Roque District. And now following San Roque District.
Stella Maurice Academy of Davao.
Yeah, nating para friends from Stella Maurice Academy of Davao. Going strong, ang ato ang...
Stella Maurice Academy.
And following Stella Maurice Academy is Buhangin District, both west and east district. Headed by the District Commissioner, Scouter Melita A. Nova and Scouter Josephine C. Bargayo. Buhangin District, hip hip! Hip hip! Ay, inay. Hip hip! Yeah, there we go, thank you very much. And now, still coming from Buhangin East District with the group's captain or the Boy Scouts and their expected unit leaders and scout leaders.
We have approaching, the good pitchet coming Kalinam from Kalinan West District.
Starting with Seren Elementary School.
Kalinan West District headed by the District Commissioner, Scouter Alma J. Hakor. Let's welcome Kalinan West District.
Kalinan West District with their Boy Scouts and their unit leaders and scout leaders. And following Kalinan East District is Bakyo District.
Bakyo District headed by the District Commissioner, Scouter Leo C. Meron together with the scout leaders and participants.
And let's hear from Bakyo District. Hip hip! Ay, inay Bakyo District, hip hip! Hip hip! Thank you very much. And following Bakyo District is Martina District.
Martina District headed by the District Commissioner, Scouter Fangini A. P. Sencho. Welcome the arrival of our good pitchet coming from Martina District.
Martina District, hip hip! Hip hip! Thank you very much, Martina District. Our Boy Scouts group leaders, unit leaders, and our scout leaders, of course. Once again, we would like to thank Kalinam Central Elementary School for our background music.
Ladies and gentlemen, the group of Tukbo East District. Headed by the District Commissioner, Serbo Juan Panyo. Palapakan na the Tukbo East District.
Tukbo East District, hip hip! Ay, inay, hip hip! Ayah, thank you very much. And following our Boy Scouts coming from... Tukbo East District. Let's call on the good pitchet coming from... Still coming from Tukbo District. District. Once again, let's hear from Tukbo District, hip hip!
Tukbo West District headed by the District Commissioner, Scouter Rosaquita D. Cabes.
Once again, Tukbo, hip hip! Ay, inay, hip hip! Hip hip! Yeah, talas salamat. Tukbo District and following Tukbo District with their scout leaders and their Boy Scouts coming from Noa Wuland.
Talayaon District.
Talayaon District.
Talayaon District headed by the District Commissioner, Scouter Melita A. Polino together with the scout leaders and participants. Round of applause to that.
Now let's hear from Talayaon District, Talayaon, hip hip! Inay, hip hip! Yeah, thank you very much, Talayaon District. Talas salamat Talayaon District with their Boy Scouts and their unit leaders now approaching the stage is Ma'ad District.
Ma'ad District headed by the District Commissioner, Scouter Naya Wemos.
Boy Scout that are coming. Ma'ad District, hip hip! Hip hip! Thank you very much, Ma'ad District. And following Ma'ad District is Pieta District.
Pieta District headed by the District Commissioners, Scouter Espial C. Gundo together with the scout leaders, principals, and delegates. Palapakan na to ang Pieta District.
Let's hear from Pieta District, Pieta, hip hip! Hip hip! Thank you very much, Pieta District for participating in our council scout job or ayat nating para Boy Scout, school commissioners, and even our district commissioner coming from Pieta District. And following Pieta is General Rojas District.
General Rojas District headed by the District Commissioner, Mr. Marisel Miguel Nocia and Sir Dragon Batsol from South and North District of General Rojas. Round of applause to our delegates from General Rojas South and North District.
Thank you very much. Let's hear from General Rojas District, hip hip! General Rojas, hip hip! Thank you very much.
We have here the approaching, coming from the Taprisa family, the Mando Christian Development and Training Center.
Okay, ladies, Mando Davao City. Headed by the school and police headquarters, scout leader Mary Ann A. Seeso. Let's hear from Mando Christian Development and Training Center, boys, hip hip! Hip hip! Thank you very much. And now approaching the stage. Following one group is Pinugao District.
Pinugao District headed by the District Commissioner, Scouter Elena Marilie Merilias together with the school commissioners and scout leaders and participants.
Let's hear from them, boys, hip hip! Hip hip! Thank you very much. Here also coming our scout leaders from Pinugao District. And following Pinugao District is our friends coming from Talobo East District.
Talobo District, Talobo West East District. Headed by the District Commissioners, Scouter Marilie Melvera Marcelo.
With them is of course their participating delegates, our Boy Scouts scout leaders, school commissioners, and our coordinators coming from Talobo East District. Boys, hip hip! Hip hip! Thank you very much, thank you very much, Talobo East District.
And now let us acknowledge the arrival of Talobo East West District. Headed by the District Commissioners, Scouter Johnny A. Peruvino together with the coordinators, scout leaders, and participants of Talobo West District.
Talobo West District starting with Aluman Peckeno Elementary School, boys, hip hip! Hip hip! With their of course, their district commissioner, school commissioners, and their unit leaders. And following Talobo West District is Marilo Central District, Marilo South District, and Marilo North District. Headed by the District Commissioners, Scouter Eric A. Amistad. District Commissioners, Juan I. Bilbo Arner Tabarines. And also, the scouter, Jairen B. Pabed. Marilo! Let's hear from you, hip hip! Hip hip! Yeah, nasok na 'yung Marilo District. Congratulations, Marilo. Thank you very much. Palapak ang mga unit leaders. Scout. Scout. Boy Scouts. And of course, our district commissioners and following the strong.
We're here from Marilo North. Our school principal, Sir Dragon, and the rest of the group. Thank you so much, Marilo District.
And following Marilo District is...
Kalinan East District. Headed by the District Commissioner, Scouter Asuncion Yes and Fisco.
Kalinan East District, boys, let's hear from you, hip hip! Louder, hip hip! Thank you very much, Kalinan East District.
300 300 participants. Both Kalinan West and East District. Kailangan sila nasukot, makagana ako. Orak, kailangan medyo kay orak. Luol rabang put ang Kalinan sa BSB Cup. Palakos. Palapakan na to ang Kalinan District. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Ay, Kalinan Labo eh. Yes, Kalinan District.
So let's hear from them one more time, boys, hip hip! Louder, hip hip! Hip hip!
300 plus participants.
Thank you very much, Kalinan District.
Let's welcome, ladies and gentlemen, coming from Taprisa family, Amigos School of Kalinan! Amigos School of Kalinan.
Both the senior scout section and of course our group section.
Thank you so much, Amigos.
And following Amigos School of Kalinan, our friends from Pakibato West District.
Agres ko sa sarlaki, Pakibato West District headed by the District Commissioner, Scouter Alan Wemos. And scout leaders, delegates, our unit leaders. Thank you so much, Sir Alan. Boys.
Hip hip! Boys, hip hip! Hip hip! Thank you very much. Also coming from Pakibato East District.
Pakibato East District headed by the District Commissioner, Scouter Johnny G. Yarso.
Pakibato, let's hear from you, hip hip! Hip hip! Thank you very much. And following Pakibato East District is no other than from the Buhangin District.
People for this thing headed by the District Commissioner, Scouter Nena P. Alrez. Ladies and gentlemen, the delegates coming from Buhangin District.
Buhangin District, hip hip! Hip hip! Thank you very much, Buhangin District. And following Buhangin District is our friends and family coming from Malabo District.
Malabo District headed by the District Commissioners, Scouter Marylo A. Villiar together with the delegates.
Tadi dutas.
And our unit leaders. Congratulations, Malabo District. Palapakan ko na to, Malabo District.
Malabo District, let's hear from you, hip hip! Hip hip! Thank you very much. And we have here the senior scouting unit coming from Amigos School of Kalinan Incorporated. Palapakan na to, ang atong mga amigo, gikan sa Amigos School of Kalinan.
Abuso, angadas. Ladies and gentlemen, scouting unit coming from Pasig Bayabas National High School.
And with this, we would like to acknowledge the arrival of our second captain, Lieutenant Noa Wuland, scout leader Dominador A. Lopez. And now following Pasig Bayabas National High School is our senior scouting section coming from...
Ah, damran celebro, frano. Of the Shano Hila National High School. Palapakan na to. Ladies and gentlemen, next delegates coming from Daniel R. Agudalba National High School.
The alma mater of our county's scouting expedition. Would like to bring the attention of the owner of the vehicle with the vehicle number TAM1859mirage. Once again, the owner of a vehicle TAM1859mirage. Your boss is coming to smooth your path. And now, our group and senior scouting section coming from...
Quads College, Quads National College of Davao. And Iya National High School.
And now approaching the stage as one cluster. Cluster.
12!
Cluster 12, starting with...
Binua National High School.
Senior scouting section.
And also coming from Malabo National High School. We have here also from Almo Integrated School.
Senior scout, let's hear from you, hip hip! Ay, inay, hip hip! Hip hip!
Thank you very much, guys. Thank you so much, talagang may... Batting. Congratulations, coming from Cluster 12, 100 participants.
Thank you very much.
1.1, lover.
Following our friends from Cluster 12 is the senior scouting section of...
Casuma Integrated School.
Still from Cluster 12.
Salamat, galitos ang unit leaders. Ceremony.
And following here, our senior scouting section coming from Malabo National High School.
Ay, lebot na daw. American vehicle. Robi makinu, po desilan. Headed by Saint Jason Serba. Cluster 1, American vehicle, unit leaders, scout masters, palapakan na to. Thank you so much, 131 participants coming from Cluster 12.
Cluster 12, let's hear from you, hip hip!
11 participants.
Hip hip!
Grand fan.
Here we have our friends coming from Doña Fermenteria National High School. Senior scouting section.
We have here our scout masters. Scout leaders showing the body.
You are all. Following Doña Fermenteria National High School. Private school, the other than Brockingshire Academy of Police.
Taprisa, halit.
Thank you very much, Brockingshire Academy. For attending our county scout journey, and following is the senior scout section coming from Talobo National High School. Thank you very much, Talobo National High School. And following Talobo National High School. It's our friends coming from Governor Vicente Uterte National High School. All the way from Quantal, Davao City. And we would like to acknowledge the arrival of our very supportive school division superintendent and county scout commissioner. No other than Doctor Reynante A. Solitario.
Palapakan na to si Sir Ray, sir. Thank you so much, sir, we love you so much.
And now approaching, delegate coming from Ma'ad National High School.
Palapak na ba kayo, ch'yan?
Thank you very much, Ma'ad National High School. Next delegates coming from Lamo National High School. Thank you very much, ang atong senior scout section coming from the different high schools. Following Lamo National High School, which is approaching our stage right now. The senior scout section of Martina Party National High School. Boys and girls, hip hip! Hip hip! Following Martina Party National High School is our senior scout section coming from Erico of the Almanes National High School. Thank you very much, our senior scout section. To be followed by the senior scouting section of Doctor Sanchango Nakolao Senior National High School. Follow the senior scouting section and our rubber scout section. Our rubber scout center. Thank you very much, brothers and fellows of the senior national high school. And following, approaching the stage is the senior scouting section coming from Davao City National High School, senior scouting section. Thank you very much. Davao City High, following City High is our friend coming from...
Gusta lot eh sila pag-aagedan eh.
Coming from Cluster 12, Mongmang and Canoy Integrated School. Thank you very much.
Next, approaching good pitchet coming from Amigos National High School. At that, ladies and gentlemen, the ticket to live, project. Right here. The surrogate mother, mother, Mary Jane. Arisa. Palapakan na to, ang... By project.
I like the arrival of our senior scout division.
We have here approaching the good pitchet coming from Cornelio P. Hona National High School.
And of course, we would like to acknowledge the presence of our first vice chair and member of the national executive board of first vice chair. No one can not call him the boy scout, yes, Si Batanta. And here, coming from Cataluna National High School, senior scouting section of... 500 plus. Let's hear from them, senior scouts, hip hip! Louder, hip hip! Thank you very much. And following that is our senior scouting section coming from... Yes! The Tahuang Kumbaga School of Home in the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Our scout leaders, our participants.
And our senior scouts are following that is our senior scouting unit coming from Talaya National High School. Of course, once again, let's acknowledge the arrival of our PSB Photo Person Division and TSB County National, our Anto Kima A. Helo. Approaching delegates and from PSIS High National High School. From... Thank you very much, PSIS High National High School. Following that is our friends coming from Cataluna Peckeno National High School, senior scouting unit.
Yes, I want to now delegate to the Peckeno National High School. Congratulations! Delegates coming from Cataluna Peckeno National High School approaching. Delegates coming from Rogishumis Academy of Davao Scouting. Thank you so much, school. Again. Rogishumis Academy of Davao. You know, come on, I didn't come man, no, come on, day, high school. Parting taga na, uy.
Ladies and gentlemen, approaching delegates coming from Alon National High School. And we would like to acknowledge the arrival of our beloved city councilor of the private district. And for your watch, our president of the board of council of the Philippines, Davao City Council, no other than the honorable. In Buyan.
We have the delegates, I want now, the Epcangol National High School scouting unit, Malabang, brother. And follow by, the first time also, we would like to acknowledge the presence of the arrival of our assistant. One hundred, three hundred, three hundred. Three hundred, out of ten.
Doctor Volofair, Doctor Rebecca Sago. Rebecca Sago, ma'am, thank you very much.
That's it, come on, come on.
And we have here Leon Garcia, National High School. And to be followed by the Philippine, Gajinka School of Kalinan. Both our senior scouts and Rover scouts.
Grisila Samalagos, Nagvige.
Ladies and gentlemen, coming from Philippine, Gajinka International School, Nada Division. Senior scouting section.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Coming from Davao City Special School, our group section. The here is my, Sasya, Bada. Following Davao City Special School is our senior scouting unit coming from Tagapang National High School. Thank you very much, Angatong, mga participants coming from Tagapang National High School. Angatong, coming from Yau National High School. Senior scouts. Malabang, from Tagapang, Yau National High School. And the national, Adne, Uya, Davao, Yau National High School. And coming from Davao City, Kataluna, Nga, Saint Peter's College of Toril. Once again, we would like to acknowledge the presence of our beloved city councilor, the honorable Pratejilion Buyan.
We are here, the participants coming from Cluster, Elsantiva Integrated School.
Our senior scout section. And also our scouts.
Next one, delegates coming from. Barakayo Integrated School. Barakayo Integrated School.
Our senior scouting section, and following Barakayo Integrated School. And is our senior scouting family coming from Bartolome, R. Nubato National High School. Luarco.
Luarco.
National High School, thank you very much. And the search, and Alaguyan. And followed by, coming from Donmar, Mimo, Tamo, Kales. La Baya, Camilo, Moreno, Caprisa, Camilo. Thank you very much, and the senior scouts and our leader. And following here, white. Coming from San Miguel, the here at grade at school. Approaching delegates coming from Solad, Alto, Tertel National High School. Thank you very much, Angatong, mga seniors, coming from Miguel Integrated School and Solad, Alto, Tertel National High School, ay, hello, sir, next. Next group, forward, coming from Bago, Osero National High School. Thank you very much, Malabang, brother, Bago, Osero National High School. And following that is the senior scouting section coming from. Baga, Ikusa, Ikusa National High School. And senior scout section with their outfit advisor, and followed by Sirawan National High School. Senior scouting section, our brothers, master. And following Sirawan National High School is Parakatan National High School. Scouting unit, and Parakatan, Angatong. And following Parakatan National High School is the senior scouting section coming from. Lord Kamutan National High School. And these scouts, they also always take the first. Thank you very much, and following is our contingent coming from. Fortero, and Atipala National High School. Together with your scout leaders, scouting units, and advisors, and of course, our senior scouts. After that, is the senior scouting section coming from. Ula National High School.
Why you buy, Ula, Ula?
Thank you very much, our senior scouts, they come with, and advisors, following that, senior scout section coming from. Martina, Biao. National High School, Cluster six. Thank you very much, our husband, and our senior scouts, following is coming from. Ampor National High School. With the senior scouts, and of course, their outfit advisor. Following that, the contingent comes from. Marilok National High School. Of course, all their senior scouts and outfit advisors, following that, coming from our private school family. Jose Maria Kales, both our senior scouts and boys scouts, I know. With their group leaders and outfit advisors, ay, one hundred thirty-seven strong participants.
Malabang, brother, Jose Maria Kales.
Thank you very much, senior scouts, kawan-kawan, kawan-sen, Jose Maria. HEP HEP! HEP HEP! Another hep hep!
Anga, ni niyo. Ni niyo, anga. We have here, group of senior scouts coming from Baguio National Schools, art arts and trades, Pinson.
Welcome, senior scouts coming from Pinson, together with our scouts. Our outfit advisor. Coming from Baguio National Schools of Arts and Trades. Their senior scouts and their outfit advisor, and will be followed by. Langpanan National High School. And the Makamikapohang, our family, senior scouting section, seventy-nine scouting units, it was seventy-nine, we're not too. Eighty-five, second-time, public second-time schools, Langpanan National High School. Participating in our jamboree and natural event, followed by, no other than coming from Bernardo, R. Baguio National High School. With their senior scouts and outfit advisors. And here, following Bernardo, coming from Doni, Trigue, Bustaporte National High School. Thank you very much, Doni, Trigue, Bustaporte National High School. Their senior scouting section, and following, Doni, Trigue, is the senior scouting section coming from Kabatian, Stand Alone, Stand Alone Senior High School. Thank you very much.
Magalagyo, lagi nun, ader.
Stand Alone.
Di, regional man.
Senior High School.
Unuk sila, deriba. Oh, regional man, tanan, di, regional eleven, siguro ni.
Approaching the delegates coming from Dakunaw National High School. Senior scouts and of course, their outfit advisor. And we have here also Rover Circle, our Rover Scouts. Participating in our jamboree and Rover's Rover, uh, Venture Cup, brother. Is Rover Circle number ten, coming from Dakunaw National High School. We would like to acknowledge the presence of the council scout executive of Davao Oriental Council, no other than.
Ferdinand DiGagabay Junior.
Originally come from Davao City Council.
Well, welcome, the delegates coming from J.B. Perios National High School. Malabang, brother, J.B. Perios.
And here approaching the stage is Binugaw National High School. Senior scouting section and our only Rover Scout. Following is Roberto F. Capulong National High School. Senior scouts. Senior scout section, together with their outfit advisor. And following Roberto Capulong is San Isidro Integrated School. Davao City rise and shine, following here, the contingent coming from Bapini National High School.
Para magcompete, is na sa fans drill competition, Nonya, headed by their. Tera.
Senior crew leader, and also scout master, or scout, or your outfit advisor. Outfit advisor.
Um, maritero, please. Ay, naku. Ay, pa-init.
Takiyo, sayang na, senior crew leader.
Welcome, Bapini National High School. Approaching the delegates coming from. Marilla, Pristina, Peter, God Agricultural High School, from tawantawan, Baguio District, Davao City.
Of course, accompanied by their outfit advisors and the senior scout delegates. And who, here, probably, probably la, one of the biggest delegates.
Congratulations for the council scout jamboree and venture cup twenty twenty five.
All the way, very far away from Kalinan National High School.
Layo kayo, three hundred, masiguro, three hundred kabuo. Malabang, brother.
Ang Kalinan National High School.
Mone siguro ni las.
Asa si Sir Bente. Congratulations. Thank you very much, Kalinan National High School. With whopping one hundred and sixty-four participants.
Total participants.
Total participants coming from Kalinan National High School, and following them is.
One hundred sila kabuo.
Wawa National High School.
God, ano? Like, what do you want? One hundred High School. Oh, pana sila. Pasigwe, pa-dahil ka, scout.
Yes.
Napaiwala na, wala ni apil pa, siguro ni.
Boy scouts.
Wawa National High School.
Thank you very much, and following them. Is Josetti Kibuloy Senior National High School.
I think I glass na.
Thank you very much.
Kapanday.
Kibuloy National High School.
Napa masikuritorian ni Tono? Kibuloy.
And following them is the senior scouting section coming from Pelasporosinson National High School.
Ay, an, malabang, brother.
Ay, an, thank you very much. Ay, an.
Uli na, hehe. Ni pangutong ng mga bata.
Ay, an, Pelasporosinson National High School, and also. Following them is our friends coming from Pintan, Kupay, Edsy High School Senior Scout Section. Thank you very much.
Ina malak, apo nga, pared ramana, kajus ramana, kuchikajus, aneha.
And following them is coming from Tamkutan National High School.
Tamtang di pa sila mauman, di pa gitna, ni ka uli.
Coming from Tamkutan National High School, and following them.
Uy, nani? Oh, uli na ta.
Coming from no other than F. Bustamante National High School. Ay, an, headed by the scout hero, scout leader, Nestor B. Versosa.
Ah, hi, naku. Ayos, sir, ayos, na feature meron sa deped, deped. Sigat, sir, sir, siging salut sa Facebook.
Ay, an, malabang, brother, ang F. Bustamante National High School. And following F. Bustamante National High School is our senior scouting from Tamugan National High School. Our senior scouting section, thank you very much, Angatong, mga bigalang silingan.
From Tamugan National High School.
And following Tamugan National High School is the senior scouting section coming from Santa Ana National High School.
Si Magulazo.
Thank you very much, Santa Ana National High School. Thank you very much, and following them is the senior scouting section coming from Santo Niño National High School. The senior scouting section, of course, accompanied by their outfit advisor.
Ader, pero?
Yes. Thank you very much, scout leader, Everhard Kahilo for this song, jamboree song, and here approaching the stage. Our senior scouting section and Rover Circle coming from Chofilo, V. Fernandez National High School. And the last, but certainly not the least participating contingent of this jamboree adventure cup. Coming from Pujang Integrated School, senior scouting section.
Ay, salamat ng run ng simu.
So we would like to proudly say that we are here in PSP Camp Malagos once again. With a total number of five thousand.
Oh, five thousand.
Five thousand eight hundred scouts, senior scouts, and scout leaders, boy scouts, senior scouts, and scout leaders.
Five thousand eight hundred.
And with that, let's proceed to our opening ceremony.
Gamay ra akong diba, three hundred?
Once again, good morning and welcome to our council scout and venture cup twenty twenty five. And to formally start our program, may request everyone to please stand. For our invocation.
Music, adong, nyuhang.
For Christian, to be led by Brother Everhard R. Kahilo, local executive board member. For Islam, scout leader Samir Samuel, troop leader of Sirawan Beaches Elementary School. And for the indigenous people, scout Angelo T. Tagnatan from Alon. from Alon.